Right, so I think we would start our town hall meeting, which I explained in a minute, was a very nice thing to do, and this is a short procedure in revealing who received the ISS 2021 10 Years Impact Award. And for that, I hand over to Mark Hancock, who is the steering committee member of the ISS Steering Committee. Mark, please go ahead.
Hi, thanks, Raymond. So I wanted to introduce the awardees of the 10 Year Impact Award. Before I do that, I just wanted to explain a little bit about what the 10 Year Impact Award is. And so it's given to a paper from 10 conferences ago, when the conference was at the time called Interactive Tabletops and Surfaces, and so that was ITS 2012. And so we go over the papers from that year, and we choose the most impactful paper from that year. We've struck a committee to review these papers, and from that year, we review the influence each paper has and determine which one had the most impact, both inside the ISS community and outside. So without further ado, I'd like to announce that the winners of this year's ACM ISS 10 Year Impact Award are Lisa Anthony, Quincy Brown, Jay Neas, Berthold Tate, and Shreya Mohan. By from their paper, "Interaction and Recognition Challenges in Interpreting Children's Touch and Gesture Input on Mobile Devices." This is a very important award that we give out at ISS. It's the one that looks at more impact than just this own year of the conference. And so just to give a brief overview, this paper presents results of a study that was investigating how children use touch and gesture. And the findings show that these systems don't effectively interpret what children intend to do. They had things like many holdovers and misses when children touch and low recognition accuracy with gestures. I unfortunately don't have time to go into a lot more detail about the paper, but really, everyone should just go back and read this paper because it's a really great one. And when I went back and read it myself, I really enjoyed doing so. I think you would as well. But there were many competitive papers this year with many high citation counts and significant impact. And the thing that made this paper stand out from the pack was it was very highly influential, both in this area to subsequent work, but also outside of HCI as well, for example, in the field of education. And we thought that was particularly important. And at the time of the publication, the authors of this paper were at the University of Maryland in Baltimore, so UMBC and Bowie State University, but they, each of the authors, I think, has moved on to other universities and industry jobs. And so I wanted to kind of introduce the people that are here and able to receive the award. Because ISS is happening in a hybrid way, in person in logs as well as virtually everywhere else. We are fortunate to virtually have three of the five authors with us. So I'll ask them to each just say hello and wave so that you can see who they are. And so the first is Lisa Anthony, who is now an associate professor at the University of Florida. So Lisa, if you could just...
Hi, thank you so much.
Thanks. And then Quincy Brown, who is now a senior director for Innovation Research at AnitaBoard.org.
Hello.
And then Jay Neas, who is now an assistant professor of computer science at Spelman College in Atlanta. And by the way, I'm getting most of this from the internet, so correct me if I'm wrong about any of these details.
Perfect. Hello, everyone.
Good. And unfortunately, I think Berthold Tate and Shreya Mohan couldn't join us. I'm right about that, right? They weren't able to make it to the call. Okay, yeah. But I'd like everyone to please join me in congratulating all of the authors for this wonderful paper. And I wanted to give a brief opportunity, and don't feel obliged, Lisa, Quincy, or Jay, to say much at all, if anything. But we'd be very interested to hear any reflections you have on the state of touch and gesture with children in today's research and products, or anything that you think might be relevant to us as a community based on the research that you've done. But also, as I mentioned, don't feel obliged. I'm putting you on the spot, I know. So feel free to just say thank you very much. And that's all. So go ahead if you'd like.
I can say a couple of things. Thank you so much to the committee for recognizing this paper, and of course, to the community for citing us and recognizing the value of this work. I think 10 years ago, when we did this paper, it was a paper I was pretty proud of at the time because it was my first paper after grad school. I had met Quincy at a conference workshop. We sat next to each other, got talking about research, and then we were able to do research together, get a grant funded, and write some great papers on this area, which was really under-attended to in the literature at the time, quantitative understanding of children's touchscreen behaviors. But in the times since, it's really grown a lot as an area for focus. And I think that's just a testament to the spread of touchscreens and the importance of considering all users and not just sort of the typical stereotypical user. And kids, you know, all of our research, starting with this paper, showed how different kids' input behaviors look from adults, and it's not enough to just give them the same device or the same algorithm and expect it to work. So I'm really proud of this paper. For any students or other junior researchers in the audience, you know, I think this paper got rejected at least twice before it was accepted. It was really improved a lot through the review process, and I remember being proud of it at the time. So I really just can't express how overjoyed I am that this paper has had such an impact. Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's give another round of applause. So yeah, Quincy or Jay, if you want to say anything, go ahead. But also, again, you don't need to. You can just pass. That's okay.
The only thing I'll add, it's great to see Jay, and so I guess we haven't been in the same room together in many years. Is that, so I don't do HCI research directly anymore. And so I work in the policy space. I'm actually now as a senior policy advisor at the White House of Subsites and Technology Policy. And I think, you know, when I was reflecting on this paper and the work that we did, it was really about understanding like the people, right? In this case, they were children and how they are and aren't being considered in the design of technology. And I think that it's, I just wanted to say that, you know, people who are doing all this work, especially students, can think broadly about how they can use all of the skills and all of the knowledge and just the way they think about approaching and solving problems, like can be used in so many domains. And so I just think, want to send those words of encouragement, because as Lisa said, this wasn't the first time. And it took us a little while to get this paper and other papers on this work published, but the field has come a long way, as has technology, right? And so I think there's a lot to be said for that, and I'm appreciative as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's wonderful to hear, and I think that's a really great message because I know I've been in that boat before where a paper has been rejected a few times before it gets accepted, and sometimes it's a lot better after that happens. And I really appreciate hearing that story. And I also, when reading the paper, found that it just seemed like there was so much in that paper that is still relevant today. And so I think that's really great to see. So congratulations again, and we look forward to seeing what impact this work will continue to have in the next 10 years as well. So thanks again. And I'll pass it back to Raymond for the rest of the town hall meeting. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks a lot also, Mark, for moderating, and also congratulations from the entire steering committee as well. We are very proud and happy to give you this award. Well, what is the town hall meeting, actually? And I think, of course, this is not the town hall you see here. And town hall meeting means that you have the opportunity as a community, as participants of ISS, be it virtual or be it in presence, to utter your opinions, to make suggestions, to improve the conference, and basically to get engaged with this conference, Interactive Services and Spaces. And we are a steering committee. That means we take care a little bit of like an overall overarching organization of this conference series and who is its members. I'm currently the chair in this year of the steering committee. Craig Anstle from New Zealand, Mark Hancock, you have just listened to him from Canada. Hideki Koike from Japan, Bonshin Lee, who is also present today, from Microsoft Research USA. Mikel Nacenta from Canada, Anne Rodo, and Edward C. are the current steering committee members. So please, you might know some of the people. Just try to approach them whenever you have a question. And of course, if you do not know any of these people, don't very still approach us. So we are very open-minded and would like to hear your feedback and your opinion. So today, basically, before I open the round of questions and discussion and answers potentially, I would like to encourage you to visit our website as well, iss-acm.org. So you see here, it's like an overarching conference website where you always see the upcoming event, like this year's ISS, but also you have access to the history of the conference and see also who the steering committee members are. By the way, we are always looking for people who love to participate, who love to engage, and to bring in their knowledge, their experience, and of course, also a little bit of time to work with us. So please approach us if you feel like this would be good to work on the organization of this conference and to improve it. One point that we would like to quickly talk about before we come to the questions is still the new PACM, PACM model. So this journal model, and maybe I hand over to you again, Mark, to just briefly summarize what we currently experience, and of course, then to hear your feedback and your experiences with that new journal model.
Okay, thanks again, Raymond. So I'll just briefly kind of discuss what this is. So this is the second year that our conference has used the PACM HCI model for publishing. And so this is a journal model of reviewing rather than the traditional conference-style review. And we actually have two rounds of reviews. This was the first time we've done the two rounds of reviews this year. So one in the beginning of the year, around February, and then another one in the typical kind of summer round, we call it. And what this means is that we have kind of several possible decisions you can have in a paper, and we can actually accept it just like we would have before. But we can also do minor or major revisions. Major revision would then be submitted to the next deadline, whatever that happens to be. It could be this year's ISS or the next winter or summer round, whatever it happens to be. We also now have an editorial board, which is what used to be called the program committee. And we have sort of an extra paper chair so that two, there's always a rollover of one person from one round to the next. And so there's always two people organizing it and one person that has been involved in the process in the past. So I think I want to kind of open the floor to everyone to let us know what your experiences are like with this new journal model, positive or negative, or neither, positive nor negative. And if you have any suggestions for us to improve the process in any way. And feel free to use the chat to ask questions or to just unmute your microphone and ask. If you're virtual.
It might be that we do not even have, I don't know whether we have authors of this year's conference among the audience. For me, just to say that I have a very small screen, so I don't see everything, like the participants and chat and everything. So sorry for that, because I'm not at the office currently. All right. So therefore, yeah, maybe. Are there questions from the audience or people who have made good or not so good experience with the journal model? Rena, you would like to say something, or?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification. So is it that if it is published in ISS, when the conference deadline is upcoming, what happens when it's past the current year?
That's a good question. And so basically, if it's either accepted or with minor revisions in any of the rounds for the current year, then you'll be invited to present at the conference. And the invitation to do that is actually optional, and you're welcome to decline that invitation if that's what you prefer. And in some countries, that it's difficult to make your way to a conference or pay for the fees. And so there's, there are supports for helping that kind of thing as well if you do want to do that. But if it's impossible, then it's still possible to publish in our journal. But if you have major revisions, then if that was in the summer round, then you would be invited to resubmit to the next winter round. And that would be for, for instance, if that was for ISS 2021, you would be invited to submit to ISS 22's winter round.
Thank you.
Yep.
By the way, if you still have questions later on, so you do, if they don't come to your mind at the moment, but maybe in a couple of days, you can also reach us. So yeah, of course, looking at our website of the steering committee, you see the contact address there. So feel free to email us or approach us differently. It's no problem. So I mean, we can already move on a little bit. And of course, if you still have questions, you can also always throw them in. So basically, it's all about you. It's about getting some feedback. Of course, yeah, any problems you were facing, maybe suggestions for improvement for the next years. And some of the topics we would like to briefly discuss with you a little bit is, of course, this tension between virtual versus in presence versus hybrid conferences for the next year. And we don't reveal where it happens. I think this still is one of the points in this conference. I hope I'm on track here. And then, of course, also, we would like to discuss with you whether you would prefer, for example, co-locating this conference with another one. This is a question we are asking for a couple of years already because it's a big step, whether we would like to make it a little bit bigger, for example, by co-locating or even joining other conferences as well. So these are just examples. Of course, you can ask any questions if you like, or we can discuss any issues you might come across, might have come across.
One of the things I'd also like to hear, by the way, maybe there was someone talking, I apologize if I interrupted, but I is, I'd like to hear the, if anybody has any responses to these topics, but also just what was the experience like in person at logs this year? Because I was unfortunately unable to come. How did it go from that side of the hybrid model versus the virtual one, which I'm experiencing right now?
So hi, Christian here. This year's papers chair and also workshop organizer. And I must really congratulate the organizers of this conference for the technical setup. It was absolutely flawless up to now. I was really impressed with the quality of holding a hybrid workshop. That was quite an experiment for us. And nonetheless, it was seven or eight hours even that we pulled through, and it was a really good, really good workshop. And I was really impressed with the quality of the setup and how well, in the end, this hybrid format had worked. It, of course, is a bit of an experiment. So a lot of things are probably things that you need to try out and then find out, and probably we'll need some repetitions before you really know what the perfect way is to optimize it. But it was really a great experience. And so I think, from a perspective as a workshop organizer, I absolutely can say that hybrid works. So that is, I think, a very important insight. And I was actually very skeptical on the morning when I arrived here. So do you think you only have like half an hour left before the workshop starts? And you think, okay, there must probably be so many things to solve as a technology, and everything was really fine and very well organized. And I really want to thank the organizers and the tech staff that they made this possible. And that was really, really good. Yeah.
Yeah, I can only join you, Christian, in thanking the organizers. This is really great that you managed this hybrid conference. This is really astonishing. And I certainly think that a lot of work has gone into that. I mean, one of the, on the other hand, on the downside, a little bit of this hybrid conferences, of course, that you always have to make, yeah, these are the organizers. So on the downside, you have to make compromises as far as time zones is concerned. This is a little issue for people who are virtual and, of course, in presence. So this is not so easy, I would say, for some people. For example, Craig Anstle from New Zealand is not able to make it just now, and hopefully sleeping. And you see, so these are maybe some of the issues which are not so easy to handle. And we had that at Kai, where we had a hybrid conference, sorry, a virtual conference with three time slots distributed over the entire day, which is, of course, good for letting people from all over the world participate. But this would not go together with a hybrid model, then this is a disadvantage. So everything has some, yeah, pros and cons obviously here.
Yeah, if I can chip in, I mean, thanks for asking so much, Christian. We sort of, I saw the initial skepticism, and I saw you smile, and that was amazing. But I think one thing that's, I don't think we're going to have a solution here for this, but something that we should, I'm looking up because that's where I see you guys, by the way, hybrid experience. But one thing that we should, we should address here, and I know that some of you have been asking us here, is sort of like, the fact that this conference can happen in a hybrid way also comes with a high cost of resources. And it's not, it's a fact that this conference is not cheap. And we should also discuss models in which we can make it more financially accessible for other people. Because the reason why there's a camera pointing at me is that we had to pay this.
No, totally agree. That's certainly a point. If you just, if you just do it virtual, then you can significantly reduce the costs, obviously, and this is obviously then in advantage. I understand that, and of course, this way, it's a bit expensive for both the presence and the virtual participants, and especially for students or people with less funding. This should be supported. That's right, or improved.
We'll point to Cameron, Christian, again.
Yeah, no, just to add briefly, maybe this, this would also be an argument to consider when talking about co-location, because maybe costs could be shared if it's co-located with other conferences. Because the infrastructure costs will be then shared by multiple conferences, which might be a positive side of co-location. I mean, there are always ups and downs for many things. I'm just, that's just my first thought when I think about that question.
That's right. That's a good idea. You're certain. I mean, even, of course, even if you, if you, for example, make the effort of traveling to a country, to a conference site, then of course, it's more worth spending all the efforts and time. You know, it's not just about your financial budget, but it's also about our climate budget in a way. So this could, of course, be helpful to join or co-locate conferences. But it's not easy, by the way. So feel free, of course, to maybe either yourself or maybe your colleagues, supervisors, friends, to propose conferences. And this also, I mean, conference locations potential, and maybe with which conference you could imagine co-locating as well. So this is, of course, always dependent also from the personal engagement of people who devote time and energy to make this happen. So in that sense, we will soon send out a call for bits for future conferences. So if you have the feeling that this would be good for you or you know people who might want to organize a conference, please let us know.
If I may contribute, a student perspective on the hybrid format. Basically, I believe that what this conference like goes and then the effort paid to organize it is actually money well spent, because what I earned and learned through all those semi-formal encounters here in the in-person formal with all these super experienced members of committee and of the community is actually invaluable. And I believe those interactions would not have happened in a fully online format as I experienced in past Secai events.
I mean, of course, being there in presence is always good. I mean, just heard a few minutes ago from the 10 Years Impact Award that the authors met physically and chatted about their research. And so they decided to work together, write a paper, and finally won this 10 Years Impact Award. So this is a very good example of that impact you can have from a physical meeting. Yeah, feel free to, just, yeah, Rena, maybe you?
I was going to say that from an inclusive diversity and equity perspective, I really like how the virtual conferences can accommodate more people. You know, when we add this hybrid part to the in-person. For me, I felt like the only part about the virtual conference that hasn't yet been solved is the social aspect. So I really do miss seeing all of your faces. Hi, everyone. And that's something I'm sure that is resonating amongst other people too. But when I went to the Kai hybrid, you know, social events with like the group team chats, it wasn't really the solution or wasn't similar to walking into, you know, the break room and seeing a group of people and coming up and saying hi. So I would love to hear about, you know, anyone's experience with these, you know, social parts about the hybrid conferences. And especially if anyone's used anything like a game-based meetup where you have kind of, you move around or any sort of cool technology for it.
I mean, it's quite, some conferences have used Gather Town, for example, or other virtual meetings where you have the ability to create a space which looks a bit old-fashioned, like in a gamey, as you know. But of course, you can decorate it, you can extend it, you can walk around with your small avatar. You can even play games, virtual games. You can have like some secret meeting spaces and everything. But I think most of you know Gather Town. That's one of the opportunities. And so I think that's quite fun and interesting. Even so, it's not completely replacing, of course, meeting people in person. That's right. But up to now, this is one of my most interesting experiences. I also once had a VR conference already a couple of years ago, which entirely happened in virtual space. So it was just in virtual reality, but it was back then in Second Life. It was also fun, but in a way similar to Gather Town, just a bit more three-dimensional.
I would expect that a VR conference definitely has to live up to that.
Yes. It really was some years ago, like 15 years ago. So it's a long time. They tried it out back then. And of course, there are a couple of games you can play, like online games and sort of like Zoom games and so forth. Of course, this is not really the same. Maybe it's a way to chat a little bit with people and to do something together. So that would be another option for socializing.
I think I'd also wanted to point out that in ISS 2020, we did use Gather for some of the social events, but not for the main event. The main event was done in this kind of Zoom call. But I think that there was a bit more of a willingness to participate in that. And maybe there still is as well, but I don't know what that will be like in the future, whether or not people will be as accepting of the sort of compromised social experiences that come with virtual. So it's another thing to consider, I think.
I do like that you see and hear different people in the virtual platform. Like that's something that, you know, is, and I guess I want to say, an advantage over in person is that we really have the ability to like take turns and hear everyone's voice in one conversation. But again, I think there's also that sort of shyness that, you know, oh, being on, you know, this platform sort of, or, you know, having an open stage can be kind of hard, especially when you see lots of presenters in the chat, but maybe don't see all of their faces present or know who's there behind each of the screen. So I think that's something that might be kind of interesting to like try and counteract that shyness.
Also, of course, then if you will be able to reduce the costs for online participation, that would be another important issue, because then it would be really easy to register just, I don't know, for 20, 50 bucks, whatever, which almost every PhD student could afford, certainly. And that would of course also lower the barrier a little bit and, yeah, the entry hurdle. um, hurdle, let's say like that. So that would be good, actually, in a way. So I think we should, as a takeaway, I think, pardon, sorry, pardon hinted at that already. It would be good, um, try to, uh, it would be good to try to reduce the costs for online participation. Also to allow this social meetings and meeting more people.
I think it would be great if you had my a license for the lab. And everybody in your local lab gets to participate via that one, um, I guess, participation. Um, I think that I've seen that before with people with the telepresence robots and sort of people gathering all together, um, and sort of watching Kai and controlling the robot. It gives an opportunity for people within the local app as well to kind of socialize. I don't know how that would work in terms of cost, but if we are, um, able to share like the bigger cost but for the lab and accommodate more people per, you know, registration, then that could be something that really helps get more participation inclusion.
Yeah, that's certainly a very good idea. I just recently experienced it for the visualization conference. So I also met with some 14 people together and we watched some sessions together locally, basically, which was very good. It was a very good experience. Yeah. By the way, maybe to answer, sorry, please.
Sorry to got you in, Raymond. I think that's something for the steering committee to actually consider. Cause from our end, uh, there's two things. First, most of our virtual registrations so far are going unused. So we actually have really good registration numbers, but most of these people haven't shown up to the conference. So I think there's sort of, there's a certain kind of a burnout. People just may have had enough of Zoom calls is one thing. Uh, but the second thing is, uh, and that's sort of, that's why I'm re-raising this point is we've actually investigated briefly the possibility to sort of, to have a group uh, participation. This is currently impossible due to Secai policy because you have to accept waivers for participation and so on. So it would not, it is currently not possible. So that's something that you could perhaps raise with the executive committee to make a policy that will actually enable that.
That's a very good point. And of course, as an intermediate step, you could even say there's one person who is responsible, like the group leader or any, anybody who pays a higher fee and, and in turn is allowed to share the link basically or to, to show it in the lab. Also, that, that, that would be maybe an intermediate step.
Or maybe that's a volunteer.
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, perhaps that if we have somebody who enforces a good, uh, you know, code of conduct, um, and sort of mediates and sets up the session that we call them a virtual SV and provide some benefit for them. I just don't know how that would work in terms of, um, registering the entire group, like if they were to hold, for example, like a local ISS and then, um, everyone sort of calls in from these groups, like from these individual parties. But again, balancing cost and code of conduct and legal policy, I can see that being a challenge.
Maybe a question to Pabu, are there also just virtual student volunteers at your conference at the moment? Or is it basically in presence? Student volunteers.
I, I believe our virtual student volunteers are not only, uh, here, but also how it work because they're captioning all the sessions that we can make them available on YouTube and available in an accessible way. And that's a big benefit of a hybrid conference because they are in different time zones. So as we sleep, they will process the videos. And in the morning, here you're al- you're already be able to access all the videos in an accessible way.
Yeah, thanks a lot. These are very important issues we have to consider. Yeah. Anything else? Any other thoughts you would like to share? Of this conference? What is con- I don't know. Um, Pabu, do we have a restriction? You said something about the room is only available to, uh, up to a certain time. Is it true? Also just that we don't, um, run into troubles here?
I mean, what I see is most people have, because we have to sort of stop serving drinks at half past. And most people here have, they have already gone to the drinks. Uh, we are very happy to chat more, more with you, uh, in this lovely format, but most people are already drinking because, uh, we have to, we have to close the building at nine.
I see. Okay. No problem. Yeah. As I, I, I don't see the entire list of participants. It seems to be quite low at the moment. Of course, we don't have to extend, uh, yeah. Too much. Alright, but thanks a lot, um, also for discussing Rena and colleagues and every body said, and yeah.
Yeah, we just, we just want to show you the room here so that you can experience that a bit. Uh, it's mainly empty at this point, but at least this is Andrew, the other general chat that you meet and Christian is over there. And, uh, yeah, we of, we sort of, we're sorry that you can't be here, but at least we tried to give you a little uh, glimpse. And as, as you can see over here, like everyone has a microphone. So we are really as hybrid as we possibly can be.
Yeah. No, this is really cool. I saw that already in the morning session, uh, today. I was quite impressed that everyone really has their own microphone. This is just amazing. Really cool. Hmm. Looks quite professional. Yeah. Very good. Yeah. So thanks a lot for participating and please feel free to approach us at any time. And also thanks a lot, Bonshin, for participating from the United States and Mark from Canada. And we are very glad. Yeah, to that ISS 2021 has started so successfully and we wish you good luck for tomorrow and the day after.